I'd like to call a meeting to order on Tuesday, October 29th, 2013, the regular city council meeting. At this time, we would like to invite Pastor Chris Ward from Cavalry Chapel, Maricopa, to give us the invocation. Chris, if you'd please come up. If you'd all please stand, after which, we'll be following a pledge of allegiance, but first of all, a posting of the colors by the police honor guard. Pastor Chris.
Please bow with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you this evening for the privilege and honor to meet in our new facility here at the city of Maricopa. We ask for your blessing upon these proceedings. We ask for wisdom and discernment for the mayor, for the city council, and for all those present, and we ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Fire guard, police officer, fire guard, veterans, up and go! Forward, halt! Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Colors, halt! Left, face!
Please follow me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the British States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, colors! Right, face! Forward, march! Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Colors, halt! Now, face! Forward, halt! Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right. Left, 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 right.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you Pastor Ward and Maricopa Police Honor Guard. Thank you very much. Well, we'd like to welcome you to our new building and our first official city council meeting here. With that, we'll move to a roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilwoman Gussi?
Here.
Member Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Potter?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to move to some proclamations and awards. The first one we have is a proclamation declaring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We apologize ahead of time that this is so late in the schedule. Usually, we like to do this ahead of October, not when it's halfway over, but circumstances this year didn't allow that, so we thank you for your patience. We'd like to recognize a few people before we move to this. I'd like to recognize former Mayor Kelly Anderson in the audience. So if you'd all give him a round of applause. Also, his lovely wife, Tori Anderson, who is also the MUSD Board President, so thank you very much. With that, we're going to go ahead and have a proclamation. Still working out the bugs. If you don't know, Tori's a very big advocate for this. She has very faithfully gone through many years of raising money for a domestic violence shelter here in Maricopa, and without her, it just wouldn't be possible, so we're thank you. I'd like to read this at this time. Violence against women and children continues to become more prevalent as social problem due to the imbalance of power due to gender and age, whereas all Arizonans are affected by domestic violence directly or indirectly, with more than 1 million victims seeking medical assistance for injuries caused by battering, and whereas the problems of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but across all economic, excuse me, racial, affectional preference, and societal barriers, and whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity due to systemic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, and whereas battered women have been in the forefront in efforts to bring peace and equality to the home, and whereas this community recognizes the vital importance of increasing the general public's awareness and support of agencies providing services to domestic violence victims and perpetrators, and whereas we hold forth a vision of a community free from domestic violence. So now therefore, I, Christian Price, Mayor of the city of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Maricopa. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a secondary proclamation tonight. We'd like the members of the Rotary Club to come up. I have a few of them in attendance here tonight. Now, if you don't know the Rotary Club, they've done a lot of good things for us over the years. We really appreciate that. They have run the pool diligently, year after year, and that's something that's really important to this community. So, I know your numbers are expanding, and that's exciting, but at this time, I have a proclamation that they have helped bring forward regarding polio awareness, and so we wanted to read that. Whereas Rotary is an international organization of more than 1.2 million business and professional and community leaders who provide humanitarian service, encourage high ethical ideals, and help build goodwill and peace in more than 200 countries and geographical regions around the world, and whereas the more than 34,000 local Rotary Clubs throughout the world indicate, or excuse me, initiate and deliver service projects to address today's challenges, including literacy, disease, hunger, poverty, lack of clean water, peace, and conflict resolution, and environmental concerns, and whereas when Rotary began its mission in 1985 to eradicate polio, more than 350,000 children were stricken with polio every year at a rate of nearly 1,000 people afflicted by the crippling disease every day. Whereas due to efforts of Rotary and its partners around the globe, reported polio cases having been reduced by 99% to fewer than 700 recorded cases in 2011, and the number of countries in which polio endemic have been reduced to three, Afghanistan, Nigeria, and Pakistan, whereas the world is on the threshold of ending polio forever, making it only the second disease after smallpox to be eradicated, and whereas Rotary International has declared October 24th, 2013, to be World Polio Day as a positive initiative to create awareness and to educate the citizens of the city of Maricopa about the vital importance of eradicating polio worldwide, and whereas the Rotary Club of Maricopa's active support of the initiative to eradicate polio is one more community effort to invite the citizens of the city of Maricopa to support Rotary's goal of a polio-free world, Rotary's ultimate gift to children everywhere. Now therefore, I, Christian Price, the mayor of the city of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim October 24th, 2013, as World Polio Day in the city of Maricopa. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. At this time, we'll move into item three point, excuse me, excuse me, item four. At this time, we have a report from the mayor. We have a variety of different things. As you know, we have been not having regular meetings due to the many things that have been going on here in the city of Maricopa, this building included, and at this time, there's quite a few things we wanted to let you know of. The first and foremost is that we were able to participate in a variety of exciting things that have happened recently. We had Stagecoach Days, the celebration of our 10th anniversary. If you were unaware, we had the, we made the front page of the Arizona Republic with a story all about the 10th anniversary about the city of Maricopa. We have received quite a few congratulations on that, and it was a well-deserved press for us. We also had the opportunity to participate in a variety of different committee meetings. I just wanted to let the council know, as well as the, as well as the public, that officially we have been adopted onto the MAG Economic Development Committee, as well as onto the MAG Air Quality Tip, which is crucial, as Paul was talking about earlier, in order to get our air quality conformity done. We also had the privilege of attending and hosting a Pinal County Governmental Alliance here, in which we were able to host a variety of dignitaries that allow us to discuss the issues that happen in Pinal County on a regular basis, and so that was a wonderful opportunity to talk a little bit about Maricopa, what we need help from, and it's just another way to network with those that are going to be influential here. I also wanted to let council know that at this time, in this break, I had the opportunity to go and speak to a group of about 300 members of an association called AHOA, which is the Asian American Hotel Owners Association. Now, for any of you that have found that that's a sore point here in the city of Maricopa for having a hotel or not having a hotel, I was one of the only city municipal leaders invited to basically shamelessly promote the city of Maricopa amongst a group of people that have $2.5 billion in assets of hotels, and I was able to kind of give them the wink, wink, nudge, nudge about how Maricopa didn't have a hotel and desperately needed one. And so in that time, we had several people afterward come up and talk to us about it, and we think that that might curtail into other good things for us. Also wanted to let the council know that we've been working very closely again with ADOT and MAG, City of Maricopa FHWA, on this great separation. It's been a wonderful opportunity to get involved, and we couldn't do it without everybody's participation. We kind of went over that extensively in the work session earlier. At this time, we also wanted to announce that the Mayor State of the City Address will be this coming Thursday, on Tuesday, excuse me, Thursday, November 7th, that will be held here in this room, as it's the first time we've had the opportunity to do so, and that will begin at 6:00, and we go from, run from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. There will be light refreshments, and we encourage everyone to come. There is an RSVP list, so we can get a count on numbers, so if you'd please do that, please contact Latricia Woods, who's over here in the corner. Please email her at the city if you need to. Also wanted to announce the Gain Event, which is getting Arizonans involved in neighborhoods. That's something that we deal closely with homeowners associations, as well as with the Maricopa Police Department, and that will be held November 9th between 2:00 and 9:00 p.m. If you have neighborhood parties already set up, we encourage you to go to those and participate in that Gain Event, in which you can meet your city council members, the chief of police, I believe the fire chief will be there, and it's just a great opportunity to get closer to those officials that you have direct contact with on a daily basis. I wanted to also point something out here, as I was looking in the Maricopa monitor, the vice mayor's not here, but I did want to point something out, that if you didn't know, during Stagecoach Days, we had the opportunity of having a vice mayor's football team versus the mayor's football team, and the vice mayor's team consisted of former Maricopa High School alums. Now, if you look at this picture, that's clearly right here of the vice mayor in this color photo, what you don't see is the real MVP of the entire game, who happened to be on my team, and that's Sarah Delgadoio. Sarah, where are you? Are you in the audience here today? There she is. There we go. Give her a big round of applause. So, although the vice mayor's team and his merry band of misfits did happen to win, there's always next year, but I would also like to point out that the MVP, Sarah, who is clearly chasing the vice mayor down here, actually is the only one in the game who got a sack, and it was her, our secret weapon, that did it. So, she is clearly invited to be on my team again next year. At this time, I also wanted to give you a quick announcement as to the boards, committees, and commissions. Thanks, Sarah. Sorry for embarrassing you. We have a whole bunch of committees that are available for people to participate on. If, I talk all the time to people to say, "I want to get more involved in the city," but they often stop short of doing anything about it, and so at this time, we have several committee positions open that directly influence the policy that happens in the city. The first one is the Heritage District. Councilmember Brown, that is your appointment, and so I would encourage you, if you live in the Heritage District or have a business in the Heritage District, to please contact Councilmember Brown, as he will be making that appointment in the coming weeks. We also have merit board applications available. If you'd like to sit on the merit board, I won't go into the details on what that is right now, but it's a very valuable board that we need citizen involvement in. We also have the opportunity to participate in the Public Safety Advisory Board. It's called the PSPRS. We have a few applications for that, and if there's anyone else who would like to participate in that, we would encourage your applications. Please send these applications to the city clerk, Vanessa Boares. And then also, there's, there are applications available as well for the IDA Board, which is the Industrial Development Authority Board. These are crucial to getting bonds and other financing agreements for the city. If you have a financial background or interest in finance and city budgets, we encourage you to participate in that and submit your application for appointment. Okay? Well, with that, that concludes the mayor's report, and we move on to the report from the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'd like to start off by introducing our new financial services director, Brian Urchin. Right, you must stand up.
Okay. I don't know what, how that happened. I'd like to bring up some of my directors. We have some awards to announce, some introductions to make, and some updates to give to the council. First, I'd like to bring up Latricia Woods.
Good evening, city manager. Good evening, mayor and council, and let me say it's great to see you up there permanently. And if I could get Ruben Garcia out of the booth for a minute, but I will begin while he's coming up. Since we have a brand-new building, we thought we needed some decorations, so we got two and a couple more coming, but I have two awards here. Last month, the city was the proud recipient of two awards from the City-County Communications and Marketing Association, also known as 3CMA. The awards were presented during the organization's annual conference in Scottsdale. The Savvy Awards competition recognizes outstanding local government achievement and communications, public sector marketing, and citizen government relationships. The Savvy Awards, as they're called, salute organizations that have creatively planned and carried out successful innovations in communications and marketing. Hundreds of submissions were received throughout the country, and I'm proud to say that Maricopa came home with two awards. The city received the Silver Circle Award for the Maricopa Resident Guide, with judges stating that it was a very beautifully designed brochure, so this is our silver circle. And then, Ruben? Part of him coming up meant that he really, like, came up. The city also received the Savvy Award, which is the highest honor awarded in each category for the 2013 Community Report. The judges said that they loved the layout and the design and stated that it was an excellent use of photography and color. They said it was a piece that was easy to understand to the everyday citizen, and they enjoyed reading it. And so, this is the award for the Community Report. So it is my pleasure to present these awards to the mayor, the city council, and the organization. Thank you.
Yes, you get a picture with the mayor.
Could you guys get closer, so we're not in the background?
Well, we're going to put the mayor right here.
Okay. We use it. Okay. We're good. At this time, I'd like Jennifer Campbell, our Community Services Director, to come up.
Thank you, city manager Fisher. Good evening, mayor and council. We've actually got a couple things for you tonight, so it's kind of like the Community Services Show for the next couple minutes. As you know, with the opening of some of our wonderful new facilities coming up here in spring of 2014, we have made some wonderful new hires, so I have some very special people to introduce. First, I would like to introduce our new Parks Manager, Randy Little. Randy, please stand up. You can't miss him. Randy comes to us from the city of Santa Monica in California. He has over 35 years' experience in parks and landscape maintenance, which includes turf, irrigation, construction, and facilities. He will be overseeing our entire Parks Division, which is our small neighborhood park, Lexington Park, as well as Pacana, and as well as the new Copper Sky Regional Park, so we are very excited to have Randy on board. He has already been very vital. He's only been here about two weeks. He's attending the construction meetings for our park, and he's doing a great job, so we're very lucky to have him, so welcome, Randy. Well, what would parks be without recreation to complement it? So next, I'd like to introduce our new Recreation Manager, Travis Carlin. Now, Travis comes to us from the city of Plymouth in Minnesota, so we landed him just at the right time of year. I want to see his reaction come next July, when he's here. I was actually joking with him, like, "You're the person that's not going to wear a jacket this winter, are you?" And he's laughing, going, "No." Travis comes to us with over 15 years' experience. His experience includes special events, arts and culture, aquatics, fitness, and yes, running a center. So again, Travis will head up our Recreation Division, which will include our enrichment classes, our sports, as well as obviously, the management of the new Copper Sky Multi-Gen Center, so Travis, welcome aboard. And we have one more. I'd like to introduce Nikita Rosso. Nikita comes to us from a place I'm familiar with, Goodyear, Arizona. Yes, I stole her. Nikita has over seven years of park and recreation experience. Her experience includes enrichment classes, senior activities, special events, youth and adult sports, as well as she is an active network guru, and that is our registration system, and Rocky's like, "Thank you for hiring her. She's already taught us a whole bunch of new things." So Nikita will be a vital part of the Recreation Division, as well as helping to make all the classes and programs at the new Copper Sky Multi-Gen extra fabulous, so welcome, This month in Community Services, we've done nothing. We've sat here, it's been not busy at all. So next up, I'd like to introduce our Library Manager, Eric Cerber, because we had some pumpkin decorating going on at the library.
Hey, thank you. We had our third annual pumpkin decorating contest, and I'd like to take this time to announce the winners. We had six winners this year. Could you, yeah. The first one is the Thora Tanny family, and I believe that's a lion. Next slide, please. Thank you. The next one is the La Fountain family, and that's Mike from Monsters Inc. And these are all pumpkins, by the way, if you can't see there. There's the Caitlin James family, and the Weber family, made a caramel apple out of a pumpkin. The Brower family is, made an R2-D2, and lastly, the Wilson family made a very cute bat. The families are all given a gift card to UltraStar, and as a $25 gift card, I'd like to thank the Friends of the Maricopa Public Library for donating the prizes. I'd also like to thank the Maricopa Parks Recreation and Library Board for judging the entries, and of course, thanks to all the participants. We had a lot of good entries submitted this year, and we're looking forward to doing it again next year.
Next up, I would like to introduce our Special Events and Marketing Manager, Audra Trudell, to give you a recap of Stagecoach Days.
Good evening. Yes, Stagecoach Days just wrapped up on October 19th. I would like to thank all of the council members, as well as the community, that came out to support this community celebration. Also, a special thanks to all of our sponsors. Our Platinum Saddle title sponsor was Orbital Communications. Our Giddy Up sponsor was Wells Fargo. The Copper Stage sponsor was What's Up Kopa. Chuck Wagon Shutter Shot sponsor, Dignity Health Urgent Care of Maricopa, and our Buckaroo sponsors, ATA Martial Arts, Karate for Kids, In Maricopa, Maricopa Smiles, Dentistry and Orthodontics, Pinal County Attorney's Office, Lando Voyas, and State Farm Insurance, Courtney Tyler and Lance Lane. In case you missed it, Stagecoach Days featured the Vendor Village, with 49 businesses and 12 nonprofit vendors showcasing their products and services to the Maricopa community, the main stage performances with nine of our local groups, and the country rock band, Desert Dixie, the Kids Corral with 10 inflatables, the Rock Climbing Wall, the Petting Zoo, and the Mechanical Bull, and the Real Stagecoach rides by Wells Fargo Stagecoach. We had 56 photographs on display from our Shutter Shots competition. Those pictures were all taken on the 10th anniversary on October 19th, and will be going to the Maricopa Historical Society. And finally, there was that flag football game, as we've previously discussed. You didn't mention the score, so I won't either, but there's always next year. So finally, I'd like to say, thanks to the support of our generous sponsors, all of our business vendors, and the performing groups. Stagecoach 2013 had a 58% cost recovery for the event. We appreciate everyone that came out to support it, and our next big event will be the Salsa Festival on March 29th, out at the new Copper Sky Complex.
We had one more event they want to talk about. Last night, we went out and judged the houses for the Mystery Mansion Mayhem 2013. We had 19 entries this year, and judging took place from 6:00 to 9:00. Judges were members of the PRL Committee, the Youth Council, as well as some city staff. So basically, announcing tonight, we've got our judges, and we've got some winners in the audience as well. And with the Mystery Mansion Mayhem, people are supposed to decorate houses, different themes, haunted, things like that. We went out last night, and I can safely say, we did have a couple screams. I give it to the new girl, Nikita. We sacrificed her many times to the person sitting up at the door, and I myself screamed a couple times, and one of our PRL members actually ran back into the van and locked the door. We're all over 18, so I'm a little fearful for some children out there on October 31st. They should have a good time. But first, I wanted to introduce or mention our honorable mention, which was the Haunted House category, and the winner was Sonia Smith. House category, and the winner was Sonia Smith in cul-de-sac at 21832 North Scott Court in Rancho El Dorado. They had a western-type Old Town, and it is actually in the entire cul-de-sac, so very cool. So they have the Honorable Mention for the Haunted House. Our third place was Jocelyn and Darrell Maury on 40893 West Bedford Road in Rancho El Dorado. And we do have tonight, though, our second-place winner, so if I could have Sean Tischhauser and Brian Cockerham. They live at 36307 West El Greco Street in Tortosa, so come on up. They did a great job. Their house was the corn maze. And our first place, they're not present tonight, and they actually have won previously in this contest, but they have never placed first, and this is the first time they've got that. So winner is Ron Gents at 19500 North Larriett Road in Glenwild. And those of you visiting the house on Halloween, Frankenstein is real. So the winners receive gift certificates from our local restaurants. And the next contest we'll have is the Holiday Homes on Parade, as well as Businesses on Parade. So entry forms will be available next week on the city's website, so that will be the next event. So we're looking forward to some more holiday cheer coming here to the city of Maricopa. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And finally, I'd like to ask Micah Miranda, our Economic Development Director, to come
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Economic film, and also some hardware we'd like to share with you tonight. But first, I'd like to bring up Mike Weiner. You're probably not gonna appreciate this, but I wanna recognize his work. He's often the silent genius behind a lot of the things we do, but I wanna thank him for the work he's done in putting together the Maricopa Matters website. It was just recognized by the International Economic Development Council as one of the leading special-purpose websites in the country for corporate, real estate, attraction. So I wanna give this to Mike, and I just thank you for all his work. I think he can't as read as Councilmember Potter's shirt, so it's always fun. Also tonight, wanna announce a business recognition program we have going on during the next four quarters. We're gonna recognize the businesses who have decided to make Maricopa a better place to live and work. So for this first quarter, we're gonna be recognizing all businesses that have been operational for zero to three years. And when you take a look at the list, we have all those businesses posted online. There's three hundred and eighty-seven businesses that have been in operation in Maricopa for three years. That's a tremendous number, and as we continue through this process, I want everybody to take a time, a moment, and think about what these businesses bring to our community and how they affect our lives. So that's it for me tonight. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
And Economic Development Department, this was something that I had talked about with him, and they had already had some things in the work, but one of the things that I think amazes people, when you hear the numbers of the amount of businesses that we have here, especially home-based businesses, working with organizations like our Chamber, Maricopa Business Council, MITA, MCE, our incubator service, it's important that we find ways to recognize the people that have taken risks here, that have hung in, and that are trying to make a positive difference. So thank you to all of the business owners.
Thank you. City Manager?
Mayor!
Oh, look. Look, 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 look who it is. It's Sergeant Pepper and his trusty sidekick, Goober.
Hello, Mayor. My name is Sergeant Pepper. This is Goober. We are here to fill the baskets for Shop Maricopa.
Shop Maricopa!
Yes, and we are here to share some very disturbing news.
Disturbing news!
We have found out...
We have found out...
Will you stop that?
Will you stop?
Thank you. We have found some very disturbing news, Mayor, that we know you have asked all city employees, including your managers, to shop Maricopa.
Shop Maricopa!
And we have found out that one of them is not.
Uh-oh.
And we have, with us today, photo evidence.
We do?
We do. Cue the photos. If you look at the Trumbo-tron here, you will notice the perpetrator as he enters the Target in Casa Grande. No, it's not Councilman Potter, no. You can see as he shifty eyes back and forth as he enters the Target. No, it's not her either. Look, there he is. You can see, I think we might be able to identify... What?
Is this the mayor?
Yes, that is the mayor. Okay, back to the photos. You can see how the perpetrator's eyes shifted back and forth deviantly as they entered the Target in the Casa Grande.
Casa Grande!
Not Maricopa. No. There it is. Now, we actually have some security footage of the actual transaction.
We do?
Yes, video, please. Here he is at the pay station at the Target in Casa Grande.
Casa Grande?
Yep. He takes money from his wallet and gives it to the lady in Casa Grande.
Oh boy!
Yes.
That might be trouble.
Mm-hmm. And pretty soon, she'll give him a receipt and his money back, and guess where all those tax dollars are going? Casa Grande!
Casa Grande!
Yep. You can see, he's got his receipt, he's ready to get his stuff... Yes, it's terrible. Now, have you, Goober, been able to identify the perpetrator yet? Keep watch...
Ah!
No! Not City Manager Sorenson. Yes, I believe if we'll look at the final photos here, we'll be able to see, see how he's exiting with merchandise in hand in Casa Grande.
Casa Grande!
Yes?
There it is, Chief Stahl!
Gosh. You know, I'm frankly flabbergasted. I'm shocked, shocked, horrified even. What other proof do you have? Because, I mean, these photos could be superimposed. I just don't know that I can believe these. We have in our possession a photo of the actual receipt. The receipt of what's for Chief Stahl in Casa Grande. The total of $10.78, with 22 cents of tax dollars going to Casa Grande. I can't believe this. I can't believe this. Have this man removed from the chambers!
I think we should handcuff him.
I think we'll set his date for a hearing for the nineteenth.
I'm like, you hold on. This is handcuffs, bro. Then you found me, huh? I did. Uh, next slide here. There's another one. He's already handcuffed. Hey, that's horrible! Sorry.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Wait, 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 guys, guys. Wait a minute, wait a minute. There must be something that we, as citizens of Maricopa, can do for this man.
Yeah, yeah.
That's it!
Mayor?
All right, all right. Council, bring it in. Confab here. Time out. Bring it in.
Let him come back and sit down.
What?
Let him come back and sit down.
All right.
So this is what needs to happen. We've basically decided here as a council that if he's gonna be removed from the chambers and basically on city hall detention, so to speak, then what we're gonna do is, if we can get the citizens of Maricopa to upload to our website between the 29th and November 19th, which is his hearing date, if we can get them to upload $100,000 in receipts of Shop Local, then maybe, just maybe, we'll consider a release.
Not from Casa Grande?
Not from Casa Grande. So is Denise out there? Denise, why don't you come up and explain a little further of what we need to do to save this poor soul and get rid of Sergeant Goober and his trusty sidekick, or vice versa?
Good evening. So we know people shop outside of Maricopa, and it happens, but our ultimate goal with our Shop Local program is to really create that awareness of the many benefits of shopping locally, and to also have residents think Maricopa first. So the release of Chief Stahl from City Hall is a great opportunity for residents to come together and support local businesses. So from October 29th to November 19th, residents can upload receipts on the city website or drop them off at any of our five destinations or five locations: Ace, Bashes Fries, City Hall, and Walmart. And with that being said, thank you so much for being a part of our Shop Local program.
Thank you, Denise. Appreciate it. Let's give a big round of applause for our crazy participants. Many thanks to Sergeant Judd and Kujer and Chief Stahl for participating in this, and just as Denise said, and our Economic Development Team, the idea and the goal here is to get as many people shopping here locally as possible. So we thank you for putting up with our silliness tonight, but we figured it was a good introduction to our new city hall. So, thank you. Any other calls to the public at this time that aren't Goober and Pepper? Board Member Anderson?
Mayor Price, council, staff, and people who are in this audience, I want to say that I am a misfit. I am a defensive specialist for the Vice Mayor's Flag Football Team. We thoroughly enjoyed that flag football game. Mayor, in fact, I was more sore Sunday morning after golf with you on Saturday than the football game. And I've got your text from that Sunday morning after the game, and I'm gonna keep it for prosperity. This gentleman was in sore need of Advil and everything you think of.
It's true.
I'm here also on behalf of the Maricopa Police Foundation. I serve as president. In fact, Councilwoman Peggy Chapito served as a founding board member, and we were formed to assist and help the police department in securing needs that they have, training, special events, and we're moving forward. On October 12th, we had our Second Annual Dinner Award for the Police Department, and we had special awards to various Sergeant of the Year, Officer of the Year, and others who have done a good job in terms of the department and the foundation. I want to recognize Mary Wykowsky. If she'll move forward, come forward. She was on vacation that night, and we thought enough of her, the foundation, her work with the foundation and the department, that she needed something in our token of appreciation. Special recognition presented to Mary Wykowsky in appreciation for her outstanding contributions to the Maricopa Police Foundation 2013. Thank you so much. And I'm looking forward to rematch.
I'll see you there. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, and thank you, Mary, for all your work. Anyone else? Eric?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, city officials, I'd like to take a minute and bring up two subjects today. One is, this past Saturday, we had the First Annual Optimist Club Bike Rodeo. We had help from our police department and our fire departments. They did an awesome job with setting up several courses for the kids to run through. The Optimist Club was able to procure bike helmets for all kids, t-shirts for the kids. It was a very fun event. For the first one that they did, we had approximately seventy-five kids go through the course. Had a great turnout with different parents and everything, and I'll say it's one of those things that, on behalf of the Optimist Club, I'll say they're looking forward to doing in the years to come. So I wanted to give that a shout out. Secondly, I've been very involved in the Shop with a Cop program this year, and what that is, is a program where local law enforcement officers work with underprivileged kids to take them on a holiday shopping experience. Now, it's a program that's based on donations, and at this point, I've been up here once before when we were at the other building, and I challenged all the city council to sponsor a child for $110. Now, as of earlier this afternoon, I wanted to, you know, come in here with some totals and stuff of what we've raised to this point. We are at $4,900 raised of our $6,000 goal, and that does not include an additional $2,000 that Walmart is actually working on giving us. So essentially, we're there. We've reached the goal. Now, with that being said, any additional funding for this goes above and beyond helping these kids for Shop with a Cop at Christmas time. It's gonna go into what we hope will be a backpack program and other programs that this money can help fund. So we are still taking donations for this. The Shop with a Cop event doesn't happen until December 14th, so we got into this very early for the sole purpose of hitting our goals and being able to raise the money needed to take... This year, it's gonna be thirty-five kids shopping. And I do wanna say that we do currently have a silent auction that is going on at Great Western Bank through the end of the day on Friday, November 1st. There are a variety of items, from gift baskets, there's a planned stay at Francisco Grande, and unfortunately, yes, that's in Casa Grande, so however, we don't turn down any opportunity for a donation for something good. And we've also had, which is really great, we've had some really strong support in the donation department from home-based businesses this year. We have a total of twenty-three items and services available that are up for auction. So I would encourage city council to stop in there, take a look at what's up on the bulletin board there, and see what we're doing. I'd encourage anybody in the room here, please stop by Great Western Bank and bid on any one of the items. And like I say, it ends on Friday at four o'clock, so let's have fun with this, and let's see if we can't make this year's Shop with a Cop program one of the best ever. So, thank you.
Mayor Price and Council, Tori Anderson, I'm here on behalf of Against Abuse Incorporated, and I have the honor of being able to serve on that Board of Directors. We have been providing services for Pinell County since 1981 as a recognized agency that serves the entire area, and I just wanna thank the city of Maricopa, council, mayor, and every single staff person that works with the city for welcoming the services that we offer, but more importantly, helping the city surround themselves and help the victims that suffer the effects of domestic violence, or even bullying, which we are trying to address in all of our schools and communities. And recently, we had our Stop the Violence Run Walk as part of Stagecoach Days, and the city went out of their way to make that a success. It was wonderful. It was a lot of fun, and I publicly wanna thank Councilwoman Gussie. She ran our water station. Councilman Potter had a team there. And I know that October is a crazy, crazy month, and I know that everybody has four events to go to, it seems like, every single day of the month, and I really appreciate the time that you put in to your... the time that you put in to your city to make it one of the best cities in the state. And I just want to thank you for helping us get this shelter built, which will be open this spring, hopefully in March, which just happens to be our gala. So again, I just want to thank you so much for making it possible for our community to be better for tomorrow. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Tom?
Mayor, council members, thank you for giving us the opportunity to share with you what's been happening at the Maricopa Center for Entrepreneurship. In the last, we moved to our new facility. Actually, we began to on the 15th, about less than two weeks ago. We still have dust settling, hence my attire. Forgive me, I was working up in the attic. But I wanted to share with you a couple of things. First is that we'll be having a grand opening November 18th. At the grand opening, we're going to be having, one of the things we'll have available is a 3D printer, which is available to our clients. I thought I'd just kind of share with you some of the little items that come from a 3D printer. This is an interlocking chain that was printed on the 3D printer. This is a bracelet which expands and fits onto your, printed on a 3D printer. This is a little bolt and a nut, printed in one piece on the printer. Fascinating technology, and of course, something as simple as a comb. Nonetheless, this is all three-dimensional printing, available to our clients, and we are just going to be thoroughly excited to see our clients take advantage of this. Again, that'll be on display on the 18th when we have our grand opening and our ribbon cutting. But I wanted to share this also with you. I actually began to occupy the facility on the 15th. That was kind of the day the toilets started running, which was great, I mean, operating, which was wonderful. In the two weeks that we've been there, while I'm kind of making modifications in there, we have had an average of two to three people walk in the door and ask and inquire about what MCE is and how that we can help them move ahead with their business plans. Really exciting. I have to tell you, in my opinion, this Phase 2 is the absolute watershed moment in the brief history of MCE. We currently are completing documentation on three new clients. We're going to be, at the end of this week, we will be 30% occupied, which is pretty happy. Happy day for me. So I just wanted to share, without you, this wouldn't be happening. In addition to that, we have, in addition to our mayor, Chris Price, who will be speaking at the grand opening, we've also received confirmation that the State Director of the USDA Rural Development will also be speaking at the grand opening. This is, USDA has been significant in our funding and will continue to be, and I think that we want to make sure that they're very happy with the results of their investments. So having said that, thank you for the opportunity. I'm looking forward to seeing you all at the grand opening, and I'll have some of these things for you, available for all of you at the executive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anyone else like to come forward? Joy.
This is really odd. Okay. Excuse my backside. Mayor and City Council, thank you for the time. Mayor, you did a great job. You stole my thunder. Came here tonight to talk about gain, but you did a great job. But I'm going to reiterate, gain is an acronym for Getting Arizona Involved in Neighborhoods. It's Arizona's version of National Night Out, which is typically held in August, and across the country, there are block parties held on the same day. Unfortunately, in southern Arizona, we would have an evening of heat stroke in August. So everybody's allowed, with gain, everybody's allowed to do it when they want, all the different agencies. So we've chosen November 9th this year, and we're doing good with our party setups, but we still have room for more. Chief Stahl really likes to party, as does, you know, the rest of the council and Fire and Police Department, and we want to keep him in Maricopa. So we're encouraged, I'd like to encourage and invite people to still sign up to have a gain party. It's a lot of fun. It's really easy. So when you see the poster around, please get in contact with us, Ricky or myself, and the email address is very simple, block.watch@maricopa-az.gov. And November 9th, between the hours of 2:00 and 7:00 PM, you pick any timeframe in there, and we will be out to party with you, because that's one of the things we like to do. So anyway, thank you very much for the time, and I'm really enjoying hearing about all the community service that we have going on here at all the projects, and I'm really very proud to be a part of Maricopa. And I feel like, I've only been here four years, but I really feel like I've come in at a perfect time where I can be a part of the history of the city, and it's a really phenomenal feeling. So thank you very much to everybody in the city for what we're growing here.
Any other final calls to the public? Okay. Yes.
I'd just like to make a quick announcement. As most of you probably know, where councils recently approved some revisions to our nonprofit funding program, and one of the major changes is that the formation of a seven-member citizen-based review panel. We currently have openings. We have two applications. We're looking for at least seven. We've extended the deadline for filing until Thursday, November 14th. So if you know anybody that would like to be involved in this, if you have questions, I'm sure you can contact Mary Wachowski, and she can tell you some of the changes. You can also view all of the documents on our city website, and then if you get your applications in, file that with the city clerk. We would really appreciate your participation in this new program. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the minutes. Item 7 on the agenda. Can I have an approval of Minutes 7.1 and 7.2, please?
So moving.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, we have no public hearings. We'll move on to Item 9. Councilwoman Gussie, you had a question on Item 9.7.
I noticed here that we were looking at, sorry. These are for contractual services, and my only question was the status of the recruitment for in-house staff on those two. The status on the recruitment for in-house staff on those positions that we're funding through 9.7.
I'd have to ask Bob to come up and answer that question, or Rick?
There he is.
Mayor Price, Councilmember Gussie. We're currently recruiting these positions right now. One, we just recently hired, they'll be on the job next week, Monday. Another one is under recruitment right now. We're going to be having interviews. And then there's a third position that will be opening up after that.
There'll be a third position that'll be opening up after, it's part of this request, 9.7?
There was only, we had, before Bill Fay, we'd lost everybody in engineering, and so this is all our engineering recruitments for four positions, basically.
Oh, okay, yeah, but I think it's a different agenda item, isn't it?
All right.
Yeah, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Council, any further questions on consent agenda this time? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve consent, please?
Some moved.
We have a motion and a second from Councilwoman Gussie.
Second.
So the, motioned and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. That carries to our regular agenda, Item 10.1, the only item on the agenda for this evening, and that is, we're going to discuss and possibly take action on approving the proposed fees and charges for the Copper Sky Multi-Generational Aquatic Center. This is for discussion and action. Jennifer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I bring before you the fees for the Copper Sky and Multi-Generation and Aquatic Center. Many of you had a chance in the last week or two to be able to tour the facility, so thank you very much for being able to make that. We do have some pictures tonight for those of you that did not get to see that. So tonight, we have for discussion, we've got the membership fees, the aquatic center fees, facility rentals, which includes various rooms within the center. All other fees will be established within the department fee schedule, being presented to council at a later date, and that will be in November. We already have certain fees established for our sports programs, as well as for enrichment classes and things of that nature, so we will just be addressing some of those fees again in November when we take that to you. Next slide. Okay, a couple definitions within this center. First, what a membership includes is use of the fitness center, the indoor track, the gymnasium, the aquatic center, child watch, certain fitness classes, and the activity room. And with the child watch, the child watch will actually be part of all family memberships. So any persons having a family membership, meaning either monthly, six-month, or the annual, the child watch would be part of that as well. How we define a youth and a student is anyone 17 and under or enrolled in high school. An adult would be 18 to 61, and a senior would be 62 and older. How we came up with the 62 was, first of all, the United States government, you're allowed to collect social security at 62, and actually, they do define the retirement age for a senior as 65, but we decided to go with 62. If the government's willing to give us money, we'll take that. Next slide, please. All right, definitions continued. A two-adult, what a two-adult means is two adults living in the same household, does not need to be a married couple, it just means two adults that actually cohabitate in the same household. Senior couple would be two seniors living in the same household, so that would be two members who are 65 and older living in the same household. A family is one or two adults and up to four children.
Excuse me, is it 65 or 62?
62. 62 and older, living in the same house. A family is one or two adults and up to four children. There can also be dependents added if you have more than that. And a family dependent, again, is an additional family member for a family membership that, again, resides in the same household as well. Next slide. So how did we come up with our fee development process? Well, first, we wanted to achieve a 75% cost recovery of the facility, meaning that with the facility at 100%, we needed to recoup at least 75% of that, meaning 25% again would be subsidized through general fund. What we did was we benchmarked other cities with similar facilities, and again, a lot of times, we call it best practices. So what we did was look at a lot of facilities around the valley. Some of them are very similar in size and also have aquatic components, and some are not, so you will notice a definite difference in some of the prices, depending on how big the facility is and whether it has an aquatic component. We also referenced the Brailsford-Dunleavy report. That was presented to council back in April of 2012, and that was a report that was done on the feasibility of operating the center, both city-run as well as third-party option. Next slide, please. Okay, so the first, what we have up here are the membership rates for Copper Sky. We will offer several different opportunities for people to participate at the center. The first is that we will have a daily rate, and what that means is people can come in and use that for that day. And obviously, we have it broken into, there's our adult, youth, and student, and senior as well. Next, we have a 20-visit punch card, which means you would basically purchase all those visits upfront, and then the 20-visit punch card would be good for one year from the time that you go ahead and basically purchase that. So if you purchased it on July 1st, it would be good until June 30th of the next year as well, so it would have a one-year expiration period. And you could continue to buy different punch passes if you choose to do so. Next up would be the one month, and with that, we do have the adult, we add the two-adult on this, we have youth and student, the senior, senior couple, family, and family dependent. And that's basically people who want to just do kind of a month-by-month rate. Next up is a six-month, and again, as you notice, the same categories. And lastly, we have an annual. If you do a lot of the math, you will notice that you get a better bargain the longer you decide to participate and get a membership at the facility. So if you break it down, when you look at month-by-month and then six-month and annual, you're actually getting a better deal when you do an annual membership. With this as well, we do know people will come to the facility with their little ones, and they want to be able to work out and become healthy and, you know, get that physical fitness, but they also want to make sure that their children are in a safe place while they're doing that, or participating maybe in an aerobics class or things like that, or jogging on the track with some friends. So what we do is we offer child watch, and that's basically an area that will be available for children 18 months to about eight years, and that'll be up for two hours. Again, with the family membership, that fee is included, so people who have the family memberships will get their children in there for up to two hours, and that's included in the membership. But what that would be is it's $2.50 per hour for residents, and again, that would be per child per hour. If you notice, we have two different types of memberships. We have resident and non-residents. If you notice, the non-residents do pay more, and they pay about 25, 50 to 25% more. It's about 50% more in our daily rate and about 25% more in the other rates. How we define a resident is individuals that live within the city of Maricopa city limits. And obviously, those Maricopa residents need to have a better price. So generally, in most cities, what I researched was, non-residents paid anywhere from 10% to 33% higher, depending on the type of membership. So again, we would break it into residents and non-resident membership types or daily visits. Next slide, please. Here's where we did the comparison. So what we did is we've got several aquatic facilities and multi-gen and community center facilities across the valley. The first couple are ones, if you notice, I've listed the square footage. Copper Sky, our center, will be 52,000 square feet. It will have multiple classrooms, fitness area, indoor gym, kitchen, indoor walking track. It will also have two pools and a splash pad. So as you can see, it's a relatively large facility. Next up, we have Glendale Foothills at 78,000 square feet, and they have three pools, as well as competition and rec pools. Cottonwood is about 54,000 square feet, and they have one pool. It has a couple lap lanes and then kind of a recreational area and a slide. There's the Aquaplex in Flagstaff, and of course, they have an indoor pool, because hence, it does snow there, so they're not going to get a lot of use out of an outdoor pool, but their center's about 50,000 square feet. So those are the other three that actually have an aquatic component. The next couple centers are actually multi-gen or community centers. Rio Vista's 52,000 square feet, so just about the same size as ours, but does not have a pool. Red Mountain is in Mesa, which is 65,000 square feet. Tumbleweed is in Chandler and is 62,000 square feet. Freestone is 48,000, and in Gilbert. And Apache Junction has 40,000, but again, they do not have any type of aquatic components. Those, several of those cities do have outdoor swimming pools, so again, people can visit the center, but then they also have to go to a different facility to enjoy aquatic recreational activities. Many of them have daily rates, actually, they all do, if you notice that, they have daily rates. A couple of them have 20-visit punch cards, such as we're suggesting. Most of them had one month, except for the Aquaplex in Flagstaff. Many of them had six-month memberships, except for Foothills and Tumbleweed, and if you notice, they all had annual memberships as well. So what we did is we basically just tried to benchmark off a lot of the prices. I mean, if you notice, we are pretty comparable. We are less expensive than the one in Glendale, because it is a little bit bigger, but again, it's probably one of the most comparable to us in the fact that we actually have two pools. Our recreation pool is rather large, we have the competitive pool, and then with the splash pad. Again, with Cottonwood and the Aquaplex, they only have one pool. Aquatic centers are wonderful, and it's a great way to keep cool in the summer, but they are a bit costly to go ahead and run. But that was one of the amenities that the citizens of Maricopa, you know, absolutely said that they wanted to see and was essential here in Maricopa. So as you can see, what I did was, I kind of bolded our things, our prices, and then, as you can see, there's different comparable rates as well. Next slide. Right here's the aquatic fees. You will have two options. You can come into the multi-gen and use that for the day, which does include the pool, or there are some people that would just like to enjoy the multi-gen or the aquatic center just in the summer. So what we did with the aquatic fees is, again, we have the adult, youth, student, and senior as well, and with that one, we have a daily rate, so you can come and go as you please. We offer five punch cards, 10 punch cards, 15 punch cards, 20 punch cards, and 30 punch cards. And again, there are different rates for the youth and for the adults, and what it ends up doing is it takes about a dollar off that daily rate, depending on what it is. And of course, some of the youth and student, because the price is a little bit smaller, they tend to do like the 30 punch as well. We also will have individual season passes and family passes, and what constitutes a season will be from about Memorial Day to Labor Day. It's generally your summer hours. Most of the time, people who are recreational swimmers will enjoy swimming in the summer. Your true competitive swimmers, well, yes, they will swim all through the winter. So again, an individual season or a family season pass will be considered Memorial Day to Labor Day. Next slide, please. Okay, here's the rental rates. So again, we do have a daily rate, and we do have a daily rate, and we do have a daily So again, we do have, not all of the areas in the multi-gen will be up for rental, but we do have several of them. The first will be a kitchen, and those of you that did get to tour the facility, we have a very nice-sized kitchen. It can be used for catering events. We can have people actually come in there and do the cooking themselves, or they can hire outside companies to come and prepare meals. We have the multipurpose dry, and what that means when we say dry and wet is, that is a classroom, which has tables and chairs and audiovisual, and it has carpet, so we kind of consider that. It's not really a great room necessarily due to arts and crafts and things like that, but it's a great room for lectures and meetings. The multipurpose wet, again, is relatively also the same size as the dry one, and that, again, has like a rubberized tile, so that would be good, again, for any type of aquatic classes, arts and crafts, and things like that. You'll be able to rent either half a gymnasium or full gymnasium. The nice part about the multi-gen center, it actually has two full-size NCAA courts. So this is a very large gymnasium. It's actually just over thirteen thousand square feet. What we have is we have a curtain divider that will actually divide the court, so you can have one full court and another full court. So people can either rent half a gymnasium or full gymnasium. We have a small dance room, which is located upstairs with a rubberized type of surface, and that's a little bit over sixteen thousand square feet. And then we have a large dancer fitness room with a wooden floor that's a little over twenty-eight hundred square feet as well. We will also offer the pool up for rentals, which means a lot of times people enjoy having pool parties, so someone can rent it out in the summertime to enjoy birthday parties or a celebration, a company picnic. So again, too, we did resident and non-resident rates there as well, and if you notice, residents do pay a lower rate. And then what's next to it is a deposit, and this is basically a refundable deposit. We take this right now while we do the COPA Center as well, and this is just to make sure that tables and chairs are not broken, we don't have stains on the carpet, and things are left clean. So as long as individuals abide by our center rules and, you know, leave the place in the condition that they found it, that is definitely a refundable deposit as well. Next slide, please. So breaking down the multi-generational and aquatic center financial estimates. The estimate in revenue for memberships is about one million, one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-nine-sixty. Other revenue estimated is three-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-five-hundred. So the total revenue estimated for the center would be one million, four-hundred-and-eighty-six-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty dollars. The estimated expenditures for the facility are one million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-three. So it basically lands us right there at a cost recovery for the facility of estimated around seventy-five percent. And we use estimated because, as you know, we do not have a similar facility like this anywhere in Maricopa. So when the former finance director, Tom Dunzing, and I sat down, we went ahead and, you know, we basically tried to do our best to estimate different costs, such as personnel, utilities, supplies, and things like that for the center. Obviously, once we've got it up and running, it'll be a lot easier to gauge really what we're spending. And again, we also say estimated revenue in the fact that, again, depending on who comes to use it and how much. Within the Brailsford-Dunleavy report, they did have estimated attendance, what we could expect for daily rate, monthly, annual, and things like that. So that's kind of where we came up with, hopefully, if those projections are right, that's where we have come up with our estimated revenues as well. So again, we're hoping that the community enjoys this. Obviously, the more use it gets, the better it will be. Staff will do their best to keep down expenses and things like that. One of the things that I wanted to mention with the rental of the facility, just like in the COPA Center, currently, we do have some insurance requirements that we will have for groups that will be running the facility, and we will continue those as well as council had voted on that, actually, back in April of twelve and then updated in December of twelve, so we will stick with that. We want to stay consistent with a lot of our rental policies. Right here is a rendering of the entire Copper Sky regional complex, so as you noticed, you can see up towards the top, that's where the multi-gen and aquatic center will lay. And for those of you that did visit it, I think one of the things that everybody remarked on was the fabulous views of the center. As I said, if you've got to be on a treadmill or a stair stepper, at least you're looking out onto a lake and grass and mountains, and of course, why we named it, but the Copper Sky, so hopefully, some very, very beautiful sunsets as well. So this, again, is just to kind of give you an idea of what the entire complex looks like and where it's situated as well. And Ruben, if you would, could you go ahead and put some of the pictures up? I would appreciate that. And many of you, when you drive by three forty-seven in Bolin, you will see this. Right here is the outside of the center. This is the lobby, looking out into the workout room, one of the classroom areas, just some of the nice architecture. There's me in my pink hard hat, again, looking out. That's the gymnasium with the walking track above. That's where the splash pad is. And I don't know if Ruben has any more. I think that's it, but Ruben took a lot of good pictures. We appreciate that. And those of you that went on to tour, thank you very much for putting up with the hard hats and the glasses and looking like a traffic cone with your vest on. So basically, that's what we have tonight. Again, those are proposed fees. Definitely questions, suggestions, any clarifications, please let me know.
Go ahead, Councilmember Brown, then we'll go to Councilmember Potter.
Is it at the end of the year that you will determine whether you've met the seventy-five percent, or when do you determine that for your purpose?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brown, that's for a year. This is, that would be yearly revenue estimates and yearly expenditures. So obviously, opening up in March of 2014 won't give us a complete year of operation, so looking forward to July first of fourteen through June thirtieth of fifteen will give us a better estimate of our year.
And if we fall appreciably short, at what point will you come back to us?
Mayor, Councilmember Brown, hopefully, we don't. We will continue to monitor. We plan on doing monthly expense reports as well as revenue to track that. And again, since we have some estimates from the Brailsford-Dunleavy, we can see where we're tracking to see. And depending on, again, we're really hoping to get those expenditures down, and if these predicted revenues, we may have a better cost recovery than that, so we'll do our best to try to balance expenditures and revenues and hopefully not have to come to, for any type of price increase. We feel that these are relatively fair prices right now and wanted to set it at a seventy-five percent. If for some reason, the center's doing better, that's great. And again, it will, it really is dependent upon, you know, the citizens wanting to use the center, so we really, it's very important, and they're a great part of this making a success because, obviously, they were the ones that helped vote for the bond, and then city council had the vision to put this together. So I think working as a team with council, the citizens, we plan on doing a great marketing campaign. We want to get people in there. You know, we want to offer people some, you know, free trials and daily passes to come in, and we really want to be able to show the city what we have to offer, and hopefully with that and our great customer service, people will want to come back and use it.
Good. Yes, Councilmember Potter.
First, I'd like to thank Jennifer for her hard work on making the fee structure up. I sat on the subcommittee with Mayor and Councilmember Kimball. Going through this slide, can you go back to the first slide regarding the age, the definition of family, please? There was something I, just as you're going through it again, thought of. I just want a clarification, please.
Ruben, if you could pull that back up. That one?
Yes.
Or the ages, or this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, no, I just wanted to see, so family member, with the difference of family, it could just be one child, so it's one, one up to four, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes. Generally, some of the research, one of the things I really wanted to do was find out what a lot of other facilities did, and most of them, most of the facilities did one to two parents and up to four. But again, you can always add additional dependents, and for that, we only charge fifty dollars for an additional dependent for a year membership and twenty-five for a six-month, and five dollars a month for one month.
And the additional dependent would be above the four, so like a fifth dependent?
Right. So basically, what it means is a family membership would be up to six people. So, exactly. So again, we would take up to six.
And then, what about the children under the age? What's the age where they're free? Under the age, is it, where their children are free?
There is not. We basically have, there isn't.
There isn't, okay.
Right. According to, and again, how Brailsford-Dunleavy went ahead and categorized that was that youth was considered, I mean, from
Zero.
Youth to seventeen. Right. So basically, you can, within the family that's in there, so we don't have anything, youth is not free because we don't have anything specifically, except for the activity room in there, that would be free that youth could go to, but not as far as membership-wise goes.
Okay. So if they get the family
It's everyone in the family.
Membership. So if they have someone, an infant, one, two-year-old, who may not be using the facility, but they have
They still would. They would, they, right. They would still go ahead and have a membership for all the people in that family, and again, with that, the child watch would then be considered free. Also, we will offer, for instance, the splash pad, which is great because that's a facility where very, very young toddlers can go in that. We will obviously offer mom and tot classes. We will have infant swim lessons. So again, it does behoove, we will actually have things for children as young as six months in the facility as well.
And then, second question regarding members of the household, how do you show residents?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Good question. Mayor, Councilmember Price, Potter. What we do is generally for residency, what we require is a picture ID, just to make sure it's you, but anything from a mortgage statement, utilities, a rental agreement, things like that, basically, anything that shows that you live in Maricopa. You know, a driver's license is good, and that's the identification, but a lot of times people don't necessarily change the address that's on that. So we just ask that you bring in some type of, like I said, if you rent here, the rental agreement, if you have a house, it's just the mortgage statement and a utility bill to show that you actually live in Maricopa.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, Councilwoman Gussi, and then over to Councilwoman Chappadus.
Now, when do you plan on starting to sell those memberships?
Mayor Price, Councilwoman Gussi, as soon as they're approved.
And now, have you guys considered a long-term promotional, non-transferable, like for a three-year term, five, longer than the one year?
Mayor Price, Councilwoman Gussi, we have not entertained that yet. I didn't see that on any of the research that I've done, but that is definitely something we can look into, and if we do end up coming up with a price with that, we can just come back to you with that as well.
Okay, but it would be non-transferable, so if you move, you lose out. All right, and now, I'd be remiss if, with Veterans Day coming around the corner, have you considered veteran fees for, special fees for veterans? We have a large community of veterans coming back to our community, and I've been promoting that throughout the valley, making sure that we get our veterans coming back to the city of Maricopa since we are a veteran-friendly community. Have you considered a pricing plan for veterans?
Mayor Price, Councilwoman Gussi, we did not. I didn't see that in any of the research, which, of course, again, we can be a forefront and we can try something different, so that is something that we can look at and could bring back to you at a later date.
Yeah, that usually happens with cities that live close, that are located closer to military bases, which makes sense to, you know, to live there and be, and be part of the community. So I'd really like to see that consideration taken into place. And lastly, you had mentioned the multipurpose audiovisual. Is that going to be included in the price plan that you have?
Mayor Price, Councilwoman Gussi, included in the rentals for the rooms will be the tables, the chairs, and audiovisual equipment as well. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Chappadus.
Just a couple of questions. One about membership. If somebody starts out, let's say, going month-to-month, or decides that they want to do a six-month, and then partway into that membership cycle, or at some point, they say, you know, it's really worth the investment to go for a whole year, is there any kind of a proration to switch over those fees, or do they start from scratch once the initial membership fee expires? How's that going to work?
Mayor Price, Councilmember Chappadus, that's one of the things, as I said, we've brought some new talent on, and that's Travis, so those are some administrative things that we are actually talking about, and Travis and I started those conversations today about, you know, what would happen if someone had an annual and needed to cancel. So we will come up with those administrative guidelines. We do not have those at that moment, but those are the things that we're working on.
Okay. My other question has to do with the pool rentals. If you want to rent the pool for a party, will you have exclusive use to that, and is there a time limit on how long that rental or that party can go?
Mayor Price, Councilmember Chappadus, generally, what usually happens is, we do schedule time for rentals, and generally, it's usually closing, sort of after-hours for the pool, so no, we don't try to interrupt normal open swim and things like that, so we'll tend to do those rentals during off-hours.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I've had the opportunity to talk a lot of, with a lot of members of the community as we've been privy to see this as it's been out for a couple of weeks and certainly sitting in, as a member of the Budget, Finance, and Operations Committee. I think that, you know, the community has been very receptive to it, and, you know, I don't think any, I don't think any plan is exactly perfect, but I know that Jennifer has put a lot of hard work into, as you can see from all the different comparisons and the Brailsford-Dunleavy report and everything else, that we really, really try to do our best to price to the market and consider the different options and variables. I would actually like to follow up on something Councilwoman Gussi said. I think it would be interesting to entertain some ideas and thoughts as to a veteran price. Now, I don't know if that qualifies under a separate category or if it shaves a percentage off of something else, but I would like to see something along those lines. I think that's a really good idea, and I think that there's, you know, again, every time you, every time you sacrifice something from one place, you know, you have to take it from someplace else, so, you know, we have, we have to be careful. But, but at, but at the same time, you know, I'm trying to think in my mind, I've heard before, you know, five thousand veterans live in and around the area. If you divide that by half, if half of those live inside the city of Maricopa, then that's a city of Maricopa fee, and then of that, you know, how many of those people would participate in utilizing the center? So, you know, again, trying to play the law of numbers game is as you whittle it down a little bit, but that being said, I think, I think it does offer some interesting perspective to possibly saying, you know, maybe something we really do need to figure out. Now, how would we do that as we talk about these fees here now? I mean, if this, this item is for, you know, discussion and action, if we said that we wanted to move forward with these, but kind of put that in there as an amendment, how would we adjust that? How would we, how would we come back in two weeks and say that it's done, we've approved it already, or how does that work? Because I'd hate to table this tonight when you've got two, you know, at least another week of already getting out there selling memberships.
Mr. Mayor, I see our wonderful city manager, Sorenson, discussing some things, so I'm going to sort of see what she would like to say about that as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I understood the question correctly, I think council could pass the fees as they are tonight and give discretion to the city manager to implement a veteran's fee that she deems appropriate.
Okay, let's, let's go to Councilwoman Gussi. She had another comment or question.
Just, just from the American Legion population that I see at the meetings, large percent of our population is over sixty-two, wouldn't you agree? But just sitting here alone, three of us are under sixty-two, so, you know, it's, it's hard to tell, you know, how, how would you actually quantify?
And to quantify that, I think, I think that if we were to provide that discretion, maybe it becomes a five percent off, you know, or a ten percent off the price.
Just the veteran or the family?
Well, and that's, and that's, that's the other question. That's the other question, and that's exactly what I was thinking of, is that, does it become the family, and that's council's discretion, but good, good, good question. I mean, maybe it's five percent off the family or ten percent off the veteran. I, I'm just trying to think here as to how do we accommodate that? Because like I said, it, you know, from a finance position, if we shave that down from a revenues perspective, you know, that cuts into the overall cost recovery, so something, something we do have to consider.
Mayor, I think, personally, I think to stay consistent, we do that is to be the household of the veteran, a percentage off. So for example, some restaurants offer, so anything off their bill, so it's not just for the veteran, it's for the whole, the whole bill of veteran and the family. So I would favor that.
Okay. Councilman Chappadus?
Because this will have multiple implications on her budget and, and some of the numbers and projections, I would feel comfortable moving ahead tonight on whatever council decides, but having this particular issue come back for a special action, because there may be some additional discussion that we want to start, once we get recommendations from, from community services staff, that, you know, not that I don't trust the city not that I don't trust the city manager's judgment, it's just that that may spark additional conversations, and I'd like to see it come back before council.
So, so in other words, uh, kind of a, a revamping of, of potential numbers, sitting down with Brian and saying, you know, what, what could that possibly affect from our number standpoint?
Exactly.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, and I think, um, possibly what we could look at is some type of discount. So since the fees are already set, it's just easy to discount the fee. You know, we've got the monthly fee or the annual fee, and then you can add a discount if that's something, and again, that was something, um, that I would discuss with, uh, city manager, Sorenson, and then bring back.
Okay. Council, how do you feel about that? I, I like the idea of being able to approve the fees so that the city can get going and selling things, but then with the caveat that we, we further investigate this and then bring back those numbers so that we can have kind of that final decision on what the percentage off may or may not be depending on what the numbers say. Does, does council approve that? Okay.
To approve the recommended fee schedule as offered by Jennifer?
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there, is a second? Uh, we have some further discussion. We'll go to Councilman Potter and then to Councilwoman Gussie.
Mayor, my only, my concern is if, uh, say we, say we do approve a discount for veterans or family, however we do that, is, is the numbers may, I don't know, because it could increase more memberships, depending how you look at it, but how it may affect the number? So, I don't know, I'm looking at it might, ham, just we're waiting for another meeting or two to get the full picture of it, see the total impact. I would feel a little bit more comfortable doing it that way. I do, I do see the sense of urgency to have, start, start getting them on board with the membership. Um, I'm hesitant if we fall short with the projections, with the numbers, that somehow, like you said earlier, to make it up, how would we do that? So, you know, I just
Right, so I guess, but my question then would be to you, are, are you suggesting that we don't do the, approve the fees tonight? Or are you simply saying, because all we're talking about is, is coming back with the veteran percentage off of one of, of these existing fees for, for further discussion?
If, uh, Jennifer, if we waited, how long would it take to come up? Or city manager, how long would it take to come up with the fee structure that, you know, that we're asking for?
Mr. Mayor, I can suggest, if we just charged them the same rate. I don't think we're talking a huge amount of money here. And I'd hate to delay approving the fees.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I agree. I, I, you know, for my own personal situation, I, you know, I too wanna know the numbers, but I
Okay, I mean, I don't wanna delay it either.
I would not wanna delay the fees as they are tonight. I don't think we have any major issues with them. It's just a deduction off of one category, and that can be discussed and brought back to us in a further event. So, so it's just an add-on.
Okay, council's fine with that. I'm good too.
Okay. Councilwoman Gussie?
I'd like him.
So, Councilmember Campbell?
I guess if the, uh, we're talking about cost recovery and the number seventy-five percent potentially going down, should we offer a discount to veterans? My question to council right now would be, do we want to offer a discount to veterans? Cause if we do, the cost recovery could go down, it could go up, but at the end of the day, it's not gonna matter. The question is, do we want to offer a discount? And there's no reason why we couldn't approve that right now.
Okay. So what, but what would you, are, are you proposing a, a certain amount on the discount? Or are you
That's left up to everybody to discuss. I think five percent would be fair. I do discounts to veterans at my store. This is obviously completely different. Um, but it, I guess my point was, if we bring it back at a later date, yes, it's gonna, it may change the, the cost recovery could go up, meaning more people are gonna buy memberships, or it could go down. But at the end of the day, it doesn't matter if that is what we want to do is offer a discount. Does that make sense? So I guess it would be just determining what percentage at, at that point. So it's not, not to say, I wanna approve fees tonight. I do. Um, so we could approve it with a discount tonight, or we could have it come back either way. But if we just discuss it and say five percent, we could add that amendment in and go with it now.
Yeah, I guess, I guess my only hesitation in, you know, I, it's like you said, I mean, there's, there's, there's almost no reason to say no. However, you know, the reality is, is it's, I just, I have a Well, yeah, I have a hesitation on the numbers. I just, I'm a numbers guy. I wanna see, I wanna see the potential possibility in the numbers, just to see what it does. And like you said, I mean, a discount of five percent overall is not, it's not the end of the world, it's a drop in the bucket. But at the same time, I guess I just would like to see them. That's my personal preference. Um, but at the same time, I say we move forward with, there is a motion on the table to approve the fees, and I, and again, I think if the council directs to, to go forward, you know, they're just gonna bring it back and tell us this is what, this is what it accounts to be, and then we say yes, and it's, and it's a done deal. But if you have another point to that?
Well, I guess, I'll just go back to my point. At the end of the day, do we want to offer a discount or not? Right? If we do, then we might as well throw it out there now, because the numbers aren't gonna make a difference at the end of the day if, in fact, we do. Now, my question to you would be, if the numbers come back and we're gonna be at seventy-three percent cost recovery, would that lead you to the decision to not offer a discount to veterans at that point? Maybe that's a discussion for another day, but
Councilwoman Gussie?
Yeah, and then, um, I, I agree with you as far as seeing the numbers, because we might, we might see five percent, we might see ten percent, we might, it'll all make a difference on those numbers. I mean, we can't sit right here. So I would move forward with that. But one of the questions that I had was, um, earlier I had mentioned, do you think we could come back to, I mean, given that this, this motion passes, come back with, um, a promotional, longer-term idea? When we come back to visit the veterans' fees?
Mayor, Councilwoman Gussie, we could. Um, I was just telling, um, city ma- city manager, Sorenson, um, depending on really how many veterans, and again, I unfortunately do not know how many veterans we have here in Maricopa, and then again, the percentage that would use the center, um, I don't necessarily think it would make a huge impact, um, just looking at the number of visitors that we'd have, but again, not knowing how many veterans we have. And again, out of the number of veterans, you also have to, are they going to, you know, use the center as well? Yeah, that's part of it. You know, cause again, you could say we have forty-five thousand residents. We know that not all forty-five thousand residents are going to, um, use the center. Um, so again, I think, um, a lot of the easy thing is to do a percentage discount, but we can bring both of those back, um, even once the fees are established, because all you're doing is discounting, and I can, we can, we can put together some numbers to see, but I do think the impact will be minimal.
Okay.
Councilwoman Chappadus?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I apologize.
Um, the Dunleavy, um, study, they didn't touch veterans at all, correct? They didn't look at that?
They did not.
So I don't know how we would even try and predict how many memberships we would get and what the monetary impact would be. My recommendation would be, we're coming back on the nineteenth of November, I think, for the rest of community services fees. We could incorporate the veterans into that presentation and, um, talk about options in terms of what the fee is, and then we would just monitor revenues monthly and see what we're getting, because we're gonna track by seniors and children and adults. And so we can start monitoring that and see what it actually plays out to be. But it's gonna be extremely, it's gonna be a guess to, to decide how many veterans would be taking us up on this offer.
Well, and that's, and that's, you know, from, from day one, that's always the issue. And to, to your point, Councilwoman Gussie, you know, you talk about a, a long-term membership. I, I think a long-term membership is a great idea, but at the same time, I worry in the fact that if we base a long-term membership on today's fees